Approval of the agenda, I do have one minor correction under consent items, action item 19. Rather than approving the 18, 19 city wages, we're going to approve 17, 18 wages. Just a minor typo. Other than that, that's all I have and I take a motion.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Next item on the agenda is public comments. It's time and place for anyone to address the council. And those on a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take a motion.
So move.
Second. Roll call please.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Real quick before we move, I'm going to call attention to a couple items. Item eight, accepting the resignation of Mike A. Miller from the library board. Not the one that we just appointed, but Mike Miller, who's been on since I believe 2010, memory serves me right.
It's been a while.
Yep, and anyway, he sent his resignation and without Mike's leadership, I think things would have turned out a lot differently and I really appreciate Mike's leadership. And then also call attention to number nine, who happens to be here tonight. After I received Mike Miller's resignation, this is probably a record time as far as filling a seat. So Lisa Mart, who most of you probably know in some capacity, has volunteered to step up, so welcome to just taking on another role within the city. Good job out of you. And going to keep on moving on here, and item 20, Trace, I'll let you recognize.
I just want to introduce Jane Jacobson. She'll be the new administrative assistant over at the police department.
Welcome. Moving on, item six, new business. Under new business, action item one is Big Creek Technology Campus. It's now time to close a regular meeting and open a public hearing on vacating an ingress/egress easement in Big Creek Technology Campus One. I'll ask the clerk when the notice is published.
Do you need a second?
Has there been any written comments received for or against?
No, sir.
At this time, I'd ask staff to provide a report.
That would be me, sir. And when Big Creek Technology Campus Plat One was final platted, there was an easement that served as the turnaround, and a gravel turnaround at the east end of the paved section. The intent there was that when the next section went on and went further east, that this ingress/egress easement would be abated and will eventually put one at the far end when all the paving is done one more time. So in essence, we're moving it down 200 and some, 250 some feet with doing this. So again, this is just a turnaround. Turnaround, we're going to extend the street, can't put it over the ingress/egress. We need to go ahead and remove that and we'll have one at the end of the new paved street when that is completed.
Questions? Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against a proposal to vacate an ingress/egress easement on Big Creek Technology Campus Plat One? Need a motion to close a public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So move. Second.
Take it. Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2017-700, vacating an ingress/egress easement in Big Creek Technology Campus Plat One. Motion please.
Motion to approve ordinance 2017-700.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item two, Wesley Life Breo conduit bond. Item A, public hearing canceled. Any comment to that?
The time, by the time it was published in the paper, the 15 required days were not able to be met. The item B to be under action items, under new business, resets that public hearing to July 10, 2017 at 6:30.
Perfect. Item B, consider motion to approve a resolution 2017-56, scheduling public hearing for 6:30 PM on July 10, 2017. Need a motion.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, police station remodel. Item A, consider motion to receive and file bids received. Need a motion to receive and file.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-35, making award of the construction contract. Any comments to this, Gary?
Only one comment, Mayor, and thank you. This was our second bid and the first time around, the low bid was 279, 950. This time around, the low bid was 268, 750. Savings of approximately $11,200. And I would not suggest that we do this every time, to take two bids in every project, but this did turn out to work in our favor.
Trace, any comments?
No, just echo what Gary said, that was, set us back a month, but it seems to be to our benefit. So we had more bidders look at it, which I think is good, gave us a little more variety and people putting their eyes on it.
Kirk Mackey, I'm sorry, from the architect.
No, I'm just saying if anybody has any questions or comments.
Questions, comments for him? Otherwise, I need a motion on B, please.
Motion to approve resolution 2017-35.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance 2017-500 regarding fireworks. Need a motion.
So move. Second. Go get them breathing.
Roll call please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item five, crosswalk improvements discussion. I'm going to throw the floor to Mr. Man.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in your agenda packet, if you would go to that, I'm also going to have Justin Jackson, who's engineer with Snyder, work through this with me. Just as a background before he gets into some of the findings that the group came up with, with the advent of new construction going on at the elementary, West Elementary School, we knew we were going to end up with more traffic on Broadway, more pedestrian traffic on Broadway. And with the addition of subdivisions, we knew we were going to end up with more pressure on students crossing roads and the two roads of concern were both Broadway and Parker Boulevard. We started with this group and started identifying problem areas and we ended up dividing this into two areas. The two areas were crosswalks that affect schools and crosswalks that were generally mostly affected by the general public and not around the school. Going into the ones around the school, we decided the best avenue to take was to bring the school in to get their input. Dan Mark, superintendent, decided that was him and a series of about four meetings spaced every two to three weeks apart and came up with a proposal. With that proposal, then we brought Snyder Engineering in and specifically Justin Jackson as well as Kathleen Connor to refine our findings that we have. Basically speaking, maybe the best thing to do, Justin, would be go through each one of those areas and the recommendations that we came up with. If you would go to that portion of your packet, this will, most of this will become fairly easy to understand.
So in the memo we put together, kind of goes over a little bit of some general guidelines, if you will, for, you know, determining what crosswalks should be have little more enhancements, either just paint markings or kind of some additional things. And we just, from there, looked at these kind of, as Gary mentioned, either school route crossing or pedestrian, high pedestrian way, kind of maybe think of it as like a pedestrian archery or not necessarily, like a vehicle archery, but just a pedestrian way that has a high amount of traffic, has a high potential for a lot of conflicts with vehicles. In the first intersection we looked at was West Side Drive and Parker Boulevard and there's a lot of school children and kind of use that as a school route to access the south side of the school. And there is a marked crosswalk there already, crossing Parker Boulevard. So essentially, we just keep the markings there and then we'll install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's similar to the pedestrian activated flasher that's out here, but instead of having the round beacons, it has a rectangle panel similar to emergency vehicle LED panels where I'd say the intensity of the flash is a little brighter, kind of a rapid flash gets a little more attention. They're very low cost, but very, very effective on vehicle compliance. And they're only pedestrian activated, so it's not a static beacon that's always flashing. So pedestrian will come up there, activate the LED light panel, you know, check for vehicles across the street and essentially we'll give a timing for that light bar to flash. And then on these installations, there'll be signs on both sides of the road as you approach the intersection and light bars on both sides will depend on which way you're going, that you'll see flashing lights on both sides of the road and then the signs. And then the pedestrian will also see at the end of the light bar is a little indicator light, pedestrian will be able to look across the street and see that the opposite side flashes, flashing to determine if the warning device is working. And so, and with that too, they're very easy to install, takes, you know, probably half a day for one installation. So to get these things, you know, around the school, up and going before the school starts, be very easy, you know, not really weather dependent either, it kind of, you don't have to worry, you know, instead of the spring, but if the weather conditions aren't ideal for other construction, crews can be up here and install these devices. And then if you're working our way north along Parker Boulevard, we recommend moving a mid-block crossing that's just south of Broadway Drive, the pavement markings and then also the sidewalk approaches and come to Parker Drive and kind of reallocate that crossing to ride that Broadway Street where you already have stop control on Parker Boulevard and is painting that crossing. And then there's no other enhancements that are needed with that approach and make that crossing since it's a stop control crossing. Then working our way around in front of the school, I know there's some confusion sometimes when arrival dismissal time, that don't know if vehicles on Broadway are required to stop if you're on either Oakwood or the school driveway, don't know if those fold-up signs are deployed or not. So we recommend to install a roll-out stop sign in the middle of the intersection which shows stop signs on all four sides so that as drivers approach, they know that the stop sign is shown for all directions. And then in the middle of the, where the fold-down stop signs are, we recommend installing another rectangular rapid flashing beacon at that location as well. And then that would kind of help the twofold that the school children, they'd be able to utilize that arrival dismissal time along with the roll-out stop sign. And then in non-school times, that other pedestrians would be able to utilize that rectangular rapid flashing beacon as well. And with that, kind of work in conjunction with some adjacent property owners in the city to install sidewalk connections along the north side of Broadway Street. And then that kind of takes care of the two school related crossings, then kind of jump over to the pedestrian archerys. Right up here at Van Dorn and Third, to enhance that crossing, as long as it can provide a little bit of traffic calming, slow vehicles down, on Third would be install some bump outs. There's a little conceptual drawing that's by far not detailed engineering. Now we'll have to kind of look at some drainage and also some elevations of existing sidewalks and curves and make sure everything is compliant with ADA, that, and also the turning paths of vehicles from Van Dorn on the Third or vice versa. But then essentially those little bump outs, they would kind of make a little refuge island, if you will, for pedestrians, neck the roadway down, slow vehicles down. And then within the bump out and install another rectangular rapid flashing beacon for the pedestrians to actually, there's some of the equipment that's currently out there, which this system that can be relocated to those bump outs. So it's, you're not essentially throwing what you have away, you're just kind of more or less relocating it in this, you know, like I said before, it's a little bit of a different style of a flasher system. And then further down on Third, on South Side Drive, trail crossing, there's a study from the DOT that recommended additional warning pedestrian activated system at this crossing, so just trying to coordinate with the DOT prior to the install of another rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And all those would have the same, similar set of, the school though would have the school crossing sign, pedestrian one over here would have pedestrian crossing sign and the one at South Side Trail Crossing would have the trail sign where it has the bicycle and pedestrian, all within to the same sign.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I can have a couple comments and then we'll pass it around. So Gary's being kind of modest on this. This started way back several months ago when there was some discussion around an interest from some homeowner, property owners about just trying to get kids across Oakwood to the school. And when he and I first started speaking about it, it mushroomed and it went from talking to a few people to getting the school involved to, to really taking a more global approach on this, not just looking at the school, not just looking at that particular crosswalk, but looking at a couple of the other areas in town and trying to really take a good, solid, solid view on getting police department involved, getting public works involved, getting Dan Mark involved, getting others from the school. Recognizing that going back several years ago, before I was sitting up here, but I remember the conversation well, about discussions with the school regarding a crosswalk on Parker. And trying to take a better approach on that than was taken several years ago. And so, you know, there was a lot of work that went into talking with them about how this might work. I mean, that obviously is looking at the West Side Drive issue and relocating some of the parking situation that is up there. What I would say, and I'll put a different hat on right now, but I'll say it as a parent who lives up in that area, who has kids who cross the West Side Drive and Parker area on a daily basis, who has seen that area continue to grow with the Woodhaven development and the Lost Lake development, a lot of additional kids that are going to continue to cross there, that, but we need to do something up there, period. And I'll speak, continue to speak with the parent hat on, who's actually unfortunately been part of an accident that happened at Parker and West Rideway with my daughter getting hit by a car several years ago. And I don't want anybody to go through what I went through. And there were some recommendations that were made back then that didn't get made then. And if we can make some improvements now, I want to see us do whatever we can to do that improvements. We've got a lot more kids that are crossing up in those areas than were then and I think that some of these are past the time of when they needed to be done. And I again appreciate the amount of time that went in from staff to come up with these recommendations because I know there was a lot of time and work that went into this. And I'm, again, I'll put my other hat back on, but I'll say that I'm happy with what's come up and I'm hopeful that we can move forward and get some things in place, particularly before this school starts. So with that, that's my so far. Comments, questions?
Very happy to vote in favor of this and take credit for the, I mean, I think you guys hit them all.
Yeah.
Around town. I think the Parker and Broadway is very confusing, that you've got a, I can't remember, you got a mid-street crosswalk there. And West Side is, I think, more utilized than a lot of people realize and hopefully can be used even more, just to try to alleviate all the congestion at the front of the school going in that, that back way. Awesome. I know probably, maybe, I'm assuming the most discussion is right out here. I don't know that there's a good answer, but this one is certainly, I think you could make an argument for a stop sign or a stop, stop sign there. I don't know that that's the best answer, but I think moving that stop line across the street and calling it out a little bit further with those bump outs is going to help on just a regular day and then obviously Four Seasons and square lighting and sounds on the square and then those activities where we've got people going back and forth, it's, it's great. I think the South Side is probably the, maybe you do something more there, but I think it's a significant benefit, so great work all the way around.
I do want to get comments from the guy who used to, and I quote, "Take his life in his own hands every day," when he would have to go out there and I'd be interested in your opinion of it.
Thank you. I think the roll-out stop signs are a step backward. You know, I hate to throw a blanket on it, but I rolled that out for about 20 years and we actually had people run over it. It was hit by trucks, it was hit, I like the flashing lights, which is something I wanted a long time ago to put up there and I think that would be a step in the right direction. But I don't know that the roll-out stop sign would be any more effective than those side street signs. That's just my humble opinion. As we're out here, I've said for years, put stop signs on them. Let's stop them, too. A lot of people stopped there anyway. So that's my opinion, for what it's worth.
I am curious, because you did mention, and it is part of the report, on the sidewalk on the north side of Broadway, the approach to making that happen and kind of a timeline on what we're looking at.
What we would need, first off, what I'm trying to do is have everything around the school completed by this year.
Got you.
Before the school year. I'd like to be given permission to go ahead and do the South Side Drive. We're going to have to do a little bit more work out here and when I go through, and I'm going to take you through the resolution, which outlines a lot of steps, I think there's about nine steps in that resolution, plus there's also an ordinance that changes the parking on West Side Drive in that two-block area that goes from.
Crestmore.
Crestmore, thank you. Can't remember, Crestmore to Parker, which changes the parking. This is figure three in Snyder's report, but also creates a loading zone where we don't have the conflict of traffic and kids going over to where the parents are parked and crossing the lane of traffic. It puts it on the same side as the school where the kids don't have to make, make that crossing.
So, sorry, Gary, is that green line on the map here, is that parking allowed there now?
Parking, there's no parking there now.
Parking's on the south side of that street. There's no parking on the north side.
And so.
So you're rotating it.
So what we would do is we'd trade sides, but during the period of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM Monday through Friday, that would be considered a loading zone.
And it is a mess up there every day. You can attest to that, too.
That's probably the busiest, busiest area in regards to schools.
That is going to take some work to re-educate a lot of parents, myself included.
And we work that into our informal plan.
Why isn't there a cross guard? I know that's a school question, but I know that they came to the meetings and I didn't know if anybody had any question like that when they were there.
It was addressed, they don't like the liability.
At one time, they wanted one real bad, a crossing guard there, the school there, in the school. The only catch was they wanted the city to pay for it, to pay for it. That was proposed a long time ago.
Because my question would be, what's the liability of not having one when you know there's an issue?
That's a good question.
Was that key, wait a minute? Any other questions or comments, I guess?
We don't have an answer.
I know. Okay. Gary, anything else to add? Staff, anything else to add?
Just, I'll walk you through implementation. Implementation is multifaceted because there's a lot going on, a lot of different places we need to change law if we're going to do that. And when you're ready for that, I'll be more than happy to walk you through.
I am. The one thing you didn't answer there, and I apologize to backstep on this or backtrack on this, was the sidewalk on the north side of Broadway and how we're going to address getting that.
We're going to be working with property owners, the, if I remember correctly, the property owners, we're going to work with those property owners and bring back a proposal on how to get a sidewalk in there. Mike and I have looked at sidewalks, projects that the city has done before, and we've had basically a 50-50 project going up Broadway and we've also done Third Street as 100%. We've had some people along here that are longtime residents that own some property here that we may not have to go at 100%, but we're at least going to open conversations officially with them and come back with some ideas. So if I may, sir, item B here is the first reading of a no parking and loading zone. That deals precisely with West Side Drive and it moves the parking from the north side. It removes the no parking from the north side to the south side and it puts a loading zone in on the north side during certain hours. That's the easiest one. The resolution is resolution 51 and this orders several things to be done. One is installation of rectangular rapid flash beacon, which is solar powered, at the crosswalk of West Side Drive and Parker Boulevard. Each one of these lights is going to cost about $8,000, each stand, it's about $8,000. So you've got 16 at each crossing of the school, so we have $32,000 there. Remove the mid-block crosswalk on Parker Boulevard. Establish the crosswalk at the corner of Parker Boulevard and Broadway Street crossing Parker Boulevard.
Can I ask a question on the removal of the Parker Boulevard? Are you taking the sidewalks that come out midway, you'll take those sidewalks out, too?
Yep. Don't want any indication that there's a sidewalk. That's a good question, because that's the first thing Mike asked, or we got to take those out, I should think, and it's, yeah. Because we realize we're just saying, hey, look, there's a crosswalk here. Then section four is putting together, creating a four-sided stop sign. That way, the people that are leaving the school know they have to stop. The people that are on Oakwood Drive know that they have to stop. The people traveling on Broadway, be it east or west, they have to stop. And in addition, installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacon, solar power to serve not only at times of the school, but also to be able to be pedestrian activated crosswalk when somebody is going to the school in non-school hours. hours, be it to go over there, to go over there, to use the recreation, to somebody that happened to be kept after school doing an assignment, did get in trouble, just doing an assignment, or whatever the, the nature of the business is. Further, Section Four direct staff to start working with the property owners to create a sidewalk on the north side of Broadway Street from the United Methodist Church to King's Place. That's the most critical area that we need. Section Five, we need to create engineering design for Third and Van Dorn to install bump outs, including a rectangular rapid-flashing solar-powered beacon, which would be right out here. Section Six, following the TEEP study, to gain permission from the Iowa DOT to install rectangular rapid-flashing beacon, solar-powered, and by the way, Justin has already started that conversation with the IDOT at the intersection of South Side Drive and Highway 415 or Pope City Drive, Third Street. We think the expense of installing all four of these beacons is $72,000. It's actually going to be less. We're going to be able to use some of our own poles, but I didn't want to run into anything unforeseen. Also, Section Eight is the creation of a right turn lane at the intersection of Third and Broadway on Third Street. In other words, right out here in front of the sign, absolutely identify that right lane as a turn lane going on the Broadway. It would be very much the same as across the street as you're heading south. There's two lanes there. One's a turn lane, one's straight ahead. This would be the same thing on the northbound where you're creating a turn lane. Those are, those are the steps in the resolution.
Can I comment on that last one? People are already, half people use that as a turn lane right now, half don't. A lot of times you'll see two carers busy turning right there and then coming together. So that was kind of part of the discussion that brought that around for us on that final item.
Now we'll just take paint to indicate that that is a turn lane.
Yep. An explanation? Take a motion.
Motion, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me. Have we heard a total cost on this yet?
I don't know what it's going to be for the islands, but everything else, we can get done for under $72,000.
For under $32,000?
Seventy-two. Seventy-two. I'm sorry. Seventy-two.
And is this something we budgeted for? I mean, it needs to be done. It should have been done years ago, but.
No, sir, it is not. We will, when we first got into this, we had no idea during budget time that where we were going to end up. To that, we can amend the budget, we can do several things. Trying to move the highest priorities first, so we may be in several budget years before this is all done anyway.
Thank you.
But I appreciate the question.
Were you making that motion?
Resolution 2017-50.
Second.
Further discussions. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2017-600, no parking and loading zones. Take a motion. Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. And item I is an option only. Consider motion to waive second and third reading.
I'm wondering if we should at least have one more.
I would agree with that.
To allow any of those people that would be affected by the no parking. I have tried to keep a good eye on that area, and we don't seem to have a large parking issue in that area at this time, but at least give them an opportunity to address the council. When this was put on the agenda, it was thought that we may have to move a little quicker, but I think we have some time here, so.
I'd lay it until, until the second reading in July and, all right, at the next meeting and then.
Yes, and the third reading will be.
Consider the way of the, all right. All right. We'll waive that. Okay. Moving on to item six, consider motion to approve Resolution 2017-53, approving an agreement for cooperative public service with Pope County, Iowa, to retrieve and impound abandoned or at-large animals within the corporate limits of Pope City effective July 1, 17. Trace, I saw your memo there. Allow you to speak to that.
Real quick, those outline our current process for animals at large, or someone calls and has an animal, they've trapped in their yard or whatever, daughter cat, is loose. Current procedure, our police officer goes out to the scene, captures the animal possible, puts patrol car, takes out Public Works, it's housed Public Works for approximately a day, day and a half. Public Works employee drives it to Slater Veterinary Hospital, where it's kept for roughly a week or five days a week, depending on what they have going on. If the owner's unidentified during that time, it's come to City Hall to retrieve their animal. Then the Public Works employee from Pope City drives it back up to Slater, picks up the animal, drives it down to the Animal Rescue League in Des Moines, and then drives back here. What I would like to do is get this contract approved with Pope County Animal Control. So I mean, currently, right now, our budget for it is $12, it's current this year, is $1,250 a year for animal control. But that doesn't include cost of Public Works for the employee's time for drive time and fuel in the truck, use of the vehicle. What this contract would do is it'd be, it'd be à la carte, as needed. I would change our police officer, or police response a little bit to that, because before we would just grab the animal, stick it out Public Works, go about our patrol. I would be willing to, an average police call for service takes 15 to 20 minutes, if you break them down. To have that officer spend that 15 or 20 minutes while they have the animal to try and locate the owner of it, we'd utilize social media, a lot of the officers know who the people are, so we wouldn't have to use the Pope County Animal Control. But the situation where the animal is feral, was resisting being captured, where we did not locate the owner during that normal time call for service time, we would call Pope County Animal Control. They would come here, Pope City, capture the animal, take the animal off our hands, take it back directly to the Animal Rescue League. There are fee structures in the contract. It's approximately $100 during normal business hours, and then it goes up with weekends and holidays. I would anticipate, in reference to my memo, we'd use it probably about 10 times a year where we were not able to find an owner. We've already started being more proactive to save Public Works from having to go through the rigmarole, but that's our current situation. I don't know what we expend year to year, but we use a pretty good chunk, I'd say three-quarters of the current budget. The upcoming fiscal year, we change that budget to $2,000, and that would be approximately 20 calls for service utilizing their systems on a regular business day, or business, I'm sorry, called on a regular business day. Some calls are made in the weekends, holidays, that'll incur more cost. If we use it 10 to 12 times, we're still going to manage the budget. On top of that, I've worked with other city staff to come up with a new fee structure, mirroring what other metro cities are charging as a city when animals are, don't have a license when they're at large. And with that new fee structure, how it would work is Animal Rescue League would be our, kind of our end result when the animal would go, we have to pay for any fees in the Animal Rescue League, housing, storage, or whatever, if no one comes to get that animal. That's the downside. The upside is when they come to get, they collect all our fees there for us. We don't spend any staff time or any administrative time on that. They bill Pope County for any remaining balances each month after the owners come and get their animals. And I do have to say it's anecdotal. I don't have any data, hard data, but a lot of it is, most of our pet owners come and get their animals. Since I've been here in the past year, I can only just give anecdotal evidence off that. I believe that, based on what I've seen this past year, those fees coming in will offset, and we would actually probably end up in a cost savings over our current system, especially if you factor in Mike's, the guy's time in truck and wear and tear on that. And it's still in the result as they're going to the Rescue League. If they don't pick it up, it's getting built back through Slater Animal Hospital, or basically taking Slater Animal Hospital out of the equation. Nothing against them, it's just an inefficient method and contracting Pope County. There's no, we don't have to pay Pope County anything unless we call them and use them. And that's at the officer's discretion if they don't feel they can handle that situation. The highlight of it is for me, it doesn't put my officers at risk of trying to capture a feral cat or a, or a dog, I mean, a vicious dog, an aggressive dog. We have no training for it. We don't have proper equipment for it. And this eliminates the need for that. It's a very prospecting measure as compared to trying to get everybody trained and equipped to handle animals like that.
Mike, you want to comment from a Public Works perspective?
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of things that this is going to prevent, I guess is what I'm trying to say. The same thing with the officers. We have to take care of them. We really don't have the proper protective equipment to be doing that, the training. And there's also some requirements for keeping an animal, animal at the shop, and this gets away from that requirement.
And this is kind of one of those things that we've just always done, so that's why we're still doing it that way.
Yeah, it's just one of those situations, yes.
Time to change.
And I can say from experience in my previous job, we had a contract, same, same contract for any city belongs to contract. And you could add more services with Pope County, or whatever, I'm not going to speak to that. That's their project managers put this together. But the contracts and the fees are all the same. They only change based on how far you are away from the Pope County Sheriff's Department Headquarters per mileage. They are great to work with. They have helped beyond just their average calls for service. They had a huge lizard getaway, a big iguana that nobody knew how to handle. And they have, one of their, one of their animal officers is trained and has experience with handling large lizards and snakes. There's just a lot of, and that's, I know that's kind of an out-there story, but you can call them, we don't have to mess with this. They come and capture it and make sure that it's properly cared for and make sure that we don't, and I didn't know, he's like, I'm glad you guys didn't try to do that, because you could injure them severely by trying to contain them, like in the backseat of a car that whipped their tail around. But there's all different types of, of animal situations like that that they're, they're equipped to handle for us.
Because if we don't do this, Mike's probably going to ask to have like lizard storage or something.
Well, and time changes.
You want a big aquarium out there, no choice. And time changes what's required by institution, a city or government to have these animals. And as those change, that's going to be more and more cost that, this is a small fraction of paying that, is upgrading facilities, adding on as requirements change through the FDA for the animal holding and treatment.
So we have a feral deer problem that's eaten up my wife's flowers, but I just have her call Pope County instead of yell at me.
That's your one. Nope. It has, it has to be, like, even that lizard was domesticated animal, it was a pet. So they won't come out and trap raccoons or wild animals. That's up to the property owner to, to call a private organization to handle that. I get a lot of those questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I kind of answered my question. In the case of emergency, they still call you.
Correct.
You guys will, your department will respond first, and then if the other, if Pope County's needed, then you guys will contact Pope County and they will come out.
Yep. That'll be the officer on scene's discretion to utilize them.
Well, because, because there are, you know, fortunately not a lot, but there have been emergencies. If you're wanting to leave the house and there's an animal in your yard and you can't leave, you, I'd hate to have think, you'd have to wait for Pope County to get here.
Yep.
You guys will handle that.
We will be the responding officer to any animal call.
Sure.
And then they will contain, handle the best of their ability until they can get another more, personal more expertise on the scene.
Officer Lampers handles them real well. Talks to him and he can enlighten you on that.
And as, and as we grow, I know we hear that a lot, issues as we grow, these things are going to change. As we grow, the pet population is going to grow as well, and the animals getting out, and it's going to, it'll get to a point where we have to do something different. And this is a.
And, yeah, I do, too. And historically, for, it's repeat offenders on the dogs.
I think we've handled eight or nine, maybe 10, Jenny, help me out, she, you know, she does all the shade part. Dogs at large, calls, and I think five of them have been the same animal in the past year.
So I think you mentioned, but so we're going to reevaluate and bring forth to us the, the fee schedule on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And one last thing I want to add, this is no guarantee of this, but I can, I can speak to Tom Coleman, the director of the Animal Rescue League. Well, I've worked with him in the past. If we have a situation, and we've had one this year where we have an animal that incur a lot of expense, the Animal Rescue League, and the owner comes in and the bill's $1,000 to get their animal out, and the owner, and the option is they pay to get their animal out, or the animal gets euthanized. And the owner said, really, I'll do everything I need to do on a male, but I only have $400. And I, I can't guarantee this, but I can tell you have experienced, this has happened to me multiple times with the Animal Rescue League. Even though our contract's with Pope County, we still can call, they are a little busy with them. They don't want to euthanize animals anymore than anybody else does. They have, every time in the history that I've dealt with them, allowed that owner to work out a payment plan and to get their animal back that euthanizing. They don't have to do that. I can't guarantee they'll do it in the future, but I know they did it with our case, our most recent case here. That's good because the dog doesn't euthanize and it gets an appropriate home. It's also good because on the, just a strictly fiscal side, we don't incur that $1,000 bill for that number or state I just used there. The Animal Rescue League will hold that and take payment from the, from the animal owner on that.
To be a little bit more serious than before, are you talking, this is only for domesticated animals that have gotten loose?
Correct.
I mean, because right next door to us, we have a woodchuck that's living underneath the porch. And the other day, we seen a weasel, so maybe the woodchuck isn't there anymore. But if that's in my garage, I can't call you guys to come shoot the damn thing?
No, you can call us if there's an emergency situation, but we're not, like I said, we can come out if something needs to be put down and handle it, if it's a, if it's a safe environment to do that in. But I'm talking about their services and in the police services in general, we'll call, come in and call, call us for. But we're not wildlife experts. And that oftentimes, it's frustrating the homeowners, they have to call a private organization that takes care of wild animals.
Like snake wranglers.
Right. All right. Good job. Take a motion on six.
Motion to approve Resolution 2017.
Take it. Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve Resolution 2017-54, approving 2016 Street Repair Project Partial Pay Application Number Two, in the amount $123,905.65.
This is our 2016 Street project, and this is the amount due. We're down to one, I think, final area that needs to be accomplished, which is Third Street, which will be tomorrow. We have made one pay application before this, $49,400. So the two of them together will add up to $173 and some change, $173,000 and change.
Need a motion?
So.
Take it again. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider motion to approve Resolution 2017-5, approving construction drawings for Deer Haven, Lot Three.
These are in order, sir. They have been approved by the city engineer and are ready for council approval.
Perfect. Take a motion. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, consider motion to approve Resolution 2017-57, approving the 28E agreement with Pope County for Public Works mutual assistance.
I'm going to start out with this, and Mike can add where he wants to. This agreement is very similar to our county-wide EMS and fire. There is no cost. What this does is it allows for all of the entities that are part of the 28E agreement to utilize personnel and equipment at times if need. Now, this time of need could be tornado cleanup, you know, just a variety of things, flooding, that type of thing. We've, we've seen this same situation with, like I said, our, our fire EMS, and it's, it's worked very well, and it's a good backstop for us should we end up in a situation where we do need additional help.
Mike?
Gary hit most of my points. Of course, this protects the cities that are either helping or either way, I guess. I believe that's one of the main points of this, and it's, it's very welcome.
And this is something that is currently not in place?
Correct.
Correct.
But it does mirror the fire and the EMS.
So what sparked this? Where did this come from?
I don't know, other than I assume they, one of the other municipalities may have had the need for it in the past and realized that there was that gap that we didn't have those types of services covered within the area.
No brainer. I'm surprised that there wasn't one in place already, quite honestly.
Polk County Emergency Management, they're trying to get that hazard mitigation. They're driving a lot of the discussions that, we have a multi disaster group that meets once a month down there.
I'm just kind of surprised that there wasn't already one, just due to all the other, you know, natural disasters that have taken place, clear back to 93.
Is that it, disaster recovery stuff? Are there any more, you know, reoccurring type stuff?
Not really.
And it's no, same with fire, no cost, either way, you can't pass it on, they can't pass it on, so.
Yeah, which is what the key is for the allowance, the federal.
Yeah, they need to get some money there. So just out of curiosity, because on fire is obvious, but how do they get ahold of you? I mean, if it's an after hours thing, is that a, do you know? Is that a?
It would probably be like through the Polk County Emergency Management.
Yeah, they work through you.
Yep.
Interesting. Take a motion. Roll call.
Sir Chat?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Motion carries. Item 10, discuss the request on the asset acquisition LLC to eliminate the ADP and final plat requirement, that 15% masonry be provided on elevations facing public streets for Wolf Creek Townhomes. Sheldon? Yes?
As a quick prelude, the P and Z had this on their agenda for May 15, 2017. Due to circumstances, both Bob Gibson, the engineer, and Jamie Myers, the developer, were not able to make that meeting. There were several people in the audience that spoke against that, and at the end of the day, the P and Z recommended unanimously that it not be granted. The developer has every option to disregard the P and Z and come directly to council, to make his case directly to council, and this is a discussion matter tonight. If this is granted, there is a lot of questions that legal and administration both have as to what we're going to need to do, and we think that we're going to have to amend a final plat, as this is actually stated in those platting documents. But with that, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you and let you have.
I'll turn the floor to Mr. Gibson.
Well, first of all, Jamie and I want to apologize, it wasn't that we couldn't get, it was that we both screwed up at the wrong date.
Fair enough.
If that sent a message to P and Z that we were taking this too lightly, or just thought it was a slam dunk, that was not our intention at all. But I think I came in the following day and had, it was me, Elton, Gary, I was stunned and called Jamie.
Or both.
Yeah, so that was totally intentional. It would have made our, you know, presented our case to P and Z. I think, I mean, I can't totally speak to them, but I think it probably would not, I suspect it would have passed maybe not unanimously, but anyway, thanks for this opportunity to tell me that our case being asked directly. And we understand, is it a, has to be unanimous here, or is it a super majority?
I would take the super majority, I believe, of the council.
Well, it depends on how it is before you tonight. And you just mentioned that it's a discussion item tonight, you're planning on bringing it back.
Yes, we would have to, if council.
To amend the actual PUD, is that what we're thinking?
I think the PUD has to be amended in the final plat.
In the final plat, yes.
You get that language transferred from the ADP to the final plat.
So bring it back to us or take it back to P and Z?
It'll come back here. I guess, yeah, unless you would want it to go back to P and Z, have them make a recommendation, and then come back here with an actual, have an important decision. You know, assuming that P and Z would make a different decision, it may or may not then require a super majority. But in answer to your question with how things stand right now with the recommendation that came out of P and Z, I do think it would take a super majority, which tonight, if you were voting on it, would mean it would take off four of you. And if, when it comes back to you for a vote at the next meeting or whenever, it would require then four out of the five if everyone was here.
So the floor back to you, and Mike should make your case.
Just kind of a little history behind what we're after here. Back when the ADP was created back in the early 2000s, I was not involved, so Sonny Banter was not involved. This was designed as a multifamily project. There were the detached units that were around the pond, those are out there today. And these were all six, eight, and four unit buildings, here, so multifamily, two-story units. And what's of particular interest to us right now is along Third Street here, that's where the ADP required where there is a frontage on a public street, there has to be 15% masonry. Makes a ton of sense in a multifamily unit like this. Particularly, like, say, each unit's here, this is actually the front of the unit, so the front is facing it, you've got your garage, you've got your entry door, to get the brick around it or stone or whatever, just dresses it up and makes it attractive. The flip side with a unit like this, when you get to the end there, those are typically boring and limited windows and just a lot of siding. And so for a presentation to the, to Third Street here, that makes total sense, they have asked for some masonry on that as well, just to break up that model with the elevation there. Way back when we started replating this for single-family detached units, that kind of changed the whole, the whole picture of it. And that's what we've got now, it's planted for single-family detached units. So it's not much different at all than your typical single-family development. Lots are just a tad smaller, but the units are not, they're not really much smaller than single-family homes typically. So what we have here now along Third is we've got the rear of these single-family houses facing a public street, and that requirement is still there, that 15% of that needs to be masonry. And that's a requirement that doesn't exist for any other single-family development in the city and probably in the metro. And even just the way we're in tonight, coming up 415 here, and just out this way, that whole development out there, where we've got all the backs of the houses facing 415, there's not a spec of brick there. And every other subdivision's kind of that way. And so that's, that's what we're trying to present here, is that this has now become a single family. Sure, it's townhome living, it's all common maintenance, everything, physically, structurally, and aesthetically, it's a single-family subdivision. And so this requirement is, strikes us as being somewhat competitively unfair. And it's, we would have brought up what we had caught back in 2010, and it probably would have brought that before you guys at that time, and just saying, because of this, we would like to remain that, it's just something that slipped by. And now that we're approaching developing some of this, that this house is, the basement is dug here now, this one, it's, all this issue came up. So the biggest issue is there are some, it actually requires on a side elevation to like right here, on a unit like this, we require 15%. And again, that's also something that's not real common in single-family homes. And in fact, within the Wolf Creek Townhomes, there are, it's out there, they have side elevations facing the streets that don't have any masonry. So it's kind of a burden placed on these units that we don't think is necessarily fair. And frankly, don't think it really adds anything aesthetically, especially to here, because the one thing, this street is about 10, 12 feet higher than the backyards here, so you're sitting along at 35 miles an hour, mostly what you see is moose. There, and in addition to, they've got decks that are going to be back there too, which kind of break up the back. You've got some photographs of a couple of homes that are back here, what their rear elevations look like. And I think you can imagine how 15% break there, really is going to have little impact. Along Third Street, there is an existing buffer of white pine trees, and several of those have died in the wood gaps there. So that buffer is not what the original was designed to be and intended to be, and that's something Jamie and I have talked about, beating up and restoring that. Now, what we would like to do, rather than just replace it with all the white pines out there, is mix up the variety, the species a little bit, and use something like blue spruce, where you get actually a denser tree, more color, and then pepper it with a little bit of the understorey flowering trees, whether it's a crab or red bud or something like that. And so that's what we've shown here, the lighter green and the existing pines that are out there. The darker green would be spruce, and then the hot tea would be an understorey tree. So that's, that's what we'd like to present to you. Jamie, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you. Jamie Myers, 2547 Third Street, Nermandale, for office. And again, I really appreciate the afternoon you've been standing for you today, and just, I guess, first of all, say, we're really, apologize for missing that P and Z meeting because we both had apparently the wrong date that we had read and just wrote it down on the wrong day, and I.
We had it for one shift.
Yeah, I don't know why, I did it on the wrong day, but apologize. But, you know, just to go back, as when we came back before council, P and Z council fat, when we replatted this, is that it was presented with elevations of single-family homes that would be built here, and those showed masonry on the front of those homes, but not on any of the sides. So thinking as we were going forward that that would be the type of home, the models that we'd be building in the community, and then, you know, to come back and realize that there was a note on the plat that nobody really caught, that it was, you know, kind of in the previous language. And so just asking you today, that you please allow us to build homes that would be more similar to the homes that are being built around the community that are in the single-family nature. It does pose some problems in construction, is just trying to move masonry around where brick, where decks and patios are, and they don't get enough concentration because you really can't put the stone very easily back up on top of the deck. Just, and it gets kind of hidden up underneath there, so we're, because most of our, most of our homes have covered decks and/or covered patios, so they get up underneath the elevation of the house, which kind of lose some of the, I guess, the benefit of that masonry being there by being, you know, 10, 12 feet in into the home as you look down, you know, on the structure from the street. Obviously, being that it's 10, 12 feet higher, you know, it's a pretty minimal amount of home that you actually see. So I guess with that, I would certainly open the floor for questions, because one of the things that I guess we talked about was being that some of those pine trees along the, along Third Street have died off over time, is that again, refilling that back in and beautifying that streetscape to, again, mix it up and not all just be white pines, but some different colored, multicolored trees and just different sizing, so it just adds more interest and more beauty to it in general.
Would these be the, I guess, what referred to as garden townhomes, like 14 or square foot type, how many do you see built down there?
14, some, many of them have finished lower levels as well, so 14 to 2600, yeah.
And then would the stone requirement on the front still remain?
Yes. We would build all elevations the same.
So it would be the same as what we, the other homes we see being built down there?
Yeah. Yeah, we're not asking to have to remove the front, the stone from any front elevation.
So you're just asking to basically build what everybody else is building down there?
Pretty much, yeah. To that end, again, we weren't here at the P and Z, but it seems to me that a representative of the association spoke, and really didn't have any issues, seems wanting some information, but there were a couple that spoke in opposition to it, and I'm not sure what their opposition was. But all the units around the lake, I don't know how many there are, there's quite a few, and they all look at each other's backyard, none of those have brick on them. None of the other units have brick on the rear. And these, these will be the only units, and it doesn't even face the interior of their developments. I'm not sure what the building's concerned with. And then going back to the trees and the buffer, they're going to have significantly more impact, visual impact, than 15% masonry payout on these units, just from the street view.
I guess from my perspective, you know, and your earlier point, I don't know that it would have made much difference if you were there, because I understand what you're saying with decks in the back, and it makes it difficult, and that sort of, that resonates with me. What doesn't is even with added trees, how that, the vantage point from the road, I think, is still there, and what happens, you know, if those trees die, are you guys going to come back after everything's been sold and replant them? Probably not, right? So it.
That becomes part of the association's responsibility to manage at that point.
To the letter of the law, yeah. But having, I mean, if one has just lost a tree, I'm temporarily leaving that area, I don't see that going back up. So that's problematic. I do agree that that is more likely to have a bigger impact than the brick. And so I don't know that I would feel comfortable voting against something that the P and Z weren't able to weigh. And I think some of the concern from the residents was a misconception on this, for these, these new houses here as composed, or as compared to what was required of other, so that could be a positive. But procedurally, I don't know how we can return this with a discussion around, but based on how P and Z weighed in, and some of those concerns, I mean, I realize it's 35, it's hard to, you know, mentally put a couple full grown, you know, spruce, red maple, whatever, trees in there, and know how much you're going to see. So comparing that to, you know, what works best with the deck is difficult, and I just, so I see part of it, I disagree with the other parts of it, and I think the parts that I disagree with, P and Z weighed in on in the meeting and talked about, so.
So a thought here, just before we get too far down the road, is that we could send this back to P and Z. They meet next Monday. I mean, we're a week away from them meeting, and then, you know, depending on what they do, then they can bring it back to us. But, you know, I hate to just kind of punt it back to them, but if they didn't really have all of the information, I mean, there would be nothing wrong, you know, Gary and I were just talking, then it'd allow staff a little bit more time to get a better handle on what we would have to do next as well.
And especially not if they didn't know, or there was some discussion about what was going to be done.
Then I do remember specifically talking about, okay, you're going 35, are you really going to see the brick? And then they talked about that and had a different viewpoint than what you said. I also remember in the meeting talking about, well, why do they not, they being, these new, these new structures here not have to comply with the other rules, which doesn't seem to be the case. So I think it's counting those two, you know, as clear.
And we've been there, we could clarify.
Right, right. So, but does that outweigh the other side? I don't know. So that's where I'm a little bit uncomfortable.
We in no nature want to change the quality of the homes that are being constructed or what's happening right now. We just don't want to have much higher cost to these homes that, I mean, already backing to Third Street, it's going to be a little bit of a disadvantage, it's from noise and traffic and so on and so forth. And now we're elevating them in price that much more, because it's about $2,300-ish per house, and an extra cost we have to put on that just for that stone.
And again, we're not asking anything that's substandard from anything else that exists in single-family homes. This would be just for, from any of the homes that went in there too, that none of them have any brick on there. So we're not asking for lower standards, we're just asking to stay at common standard, particularly for detached units, which these are.
Well, from my understanding, P and Z had everything in a letter that you guys have told us tonight. And personally, if I was on P and Z and this got sent back to me after unanimous no, I would be insulted to high heaven. So I'm not in favor of sending this back, and I'm not in favor of going against the P and Z, and that position isn't going to change.
Ron is rep from P and Z?
Yeah, I don't think it'll change the outcome. I think they had all the information that you presented tonight. My feeling on this, and maybe it's different than everybody else's. My feeling on this, and maybe it's different than everybody else's, that's a rule to put that on there, correct? We start breaking rules and I've been insisting and not to say that we haven't done it, but it's always come back to haunt us when we do. And pretty soon now that somebody else is going to come in here and they're going to say, well, yeah, but you let them do it, so why do we have to put it on there? And so, no, I'm not in favor of it.
Can I say something to that?
Sure.
It's not an ordinance or anything that we're asking to change. Well, in a sense, it is, it is. It's the ADP.
I was going to say, you know more than I do.
It's a customized ordinance, a PUD, ADP.
No, if, if we want to change the ordinance, then I'll certainly look at that, but I don't like to just.
But it's the ordinance specific to this project alone.
Yeah, so you really, from a legal standpoint, that is what you're doing. You're changing the ordinance for this particular development. That's how it's, how PUD change is made. That's how it would be brought back to you.
And I guess my, my thoughts on that was then if that's unique to this, why didn't this all come up in the beginning? Just because.
Good question. That's a very good question.
You know, if it had been presented in the beginning, then maybe there's been to be a different outlook from everybody. But now at the end, you're wanting to present this change.
Well, in the beginning, when we came to you to rezone the entire platte, we presented elevations of homes in which have what we, you know, we would like to build there, did not catch that a platte, a note from the past plats that were, when they were six and eight plexes and that they had facing, façades that were facing the outside roads that they actually needed to have, you know, because there were some of the front façades and side façades that they were breaking it up is that those were much more dense units and it's more common to have, you know, certain masonry on corners. And when we changed, didn't catch that that note was there, but I presented at the time and I was actually here that these homes would have façades that were masonry on the front only and the rest of them did not. The only reason it's coming up now is we just got to these, to start building, turned in for a building permit and they said, oh, you gotta have 15% masonry. I said, what are you talking about? I don't know what you're talking about. Didn't know it was on platte notes, not in the requirements. So that's why I just now came up this. We just now asked to build this home right here in which it, of course, has a side that faces Third Street. That's the only reason we just kind of figured it out.
And for what it's worth, this particular house right here, the vegetation here behind the sign, engine sign is so dense that you can't even see that. You're not going to see the side of that house. Now, obviously, that's not the same situation, or at least won't be for years long here. But here, to the lesser extent, even here, there's some good blockage of these. But again, the situation is they're single-family detached units and we're not lowering the standard for that. And going back to changing the ADP, that's what was done back in 2010. We changed it from the multifamily units, the fours, the six and the eight plexes, to these single-family units. And so we changed the rules of this ADP way back then. We didn't catch that one regulation that was really more applicable for the multifamily units and that's what we're asking to do now.
I do think, from, I did talk to one resident that was down there. I do think there is some misperceptions as to what was going to be asked. I think a lot of people down there think that there were going to be a request coming forward for no brick at all. I don't know if those are the people at the meeting, I'm not sure. But that aside.
And that's what I was referring to.
Right. That aside, if this was a quadplex, aplex, whatever plex or a business, I would not be in favor of changing the standards because when I, when I see that half brick on the back, that reminds me like the back of the bank of town here, Luana. It just doesn't make any sense to me why on the back of a, a single-family residence you would put half brick up and have it look decent. I mean, you could look at the highest-priced homes we have here in town and none of them, to my knowledge, have brick going up on the back unless they are a bank.
Are they facing Third Street in the back?
Well, no, but they're also.
There you go.
Well, that one other corner isn't.
But you also realize we have a development over there in Marina Cove that faces one of the busiest roads in town and we don't have any bricks back there. And that was the same development where we cut all kinds of slack to that developer to say the least, even surprised we didn't build the houses for them. So I guess my question is, is, or thoughts are on that, is if this wasn't a housing development, there's no way I could, could go ahead and if they were asking for the progress to be done, there's no way I could support it. But no matter how stubborn somebody wants to be, I just think it'd be crazy, look to a home half, half brick on the back unless we're going to have drive-through or sandwiches or something and it's out the back, you know? And if that's the case, then, you know, there's a lot of developments we're going to have coming up. We just, review. None of those houses to the back have brick. The development up here where Lindsay lives that faced Parker, none of those developments, homes have houses, bricks go back. This goes back to what I've always said before with the major beef I have out in Marina Cove, is that everybody needs to be held to the same standard. And yes, something slipped through the cracks here and it should have been changed in 2010. Well, I'm glad we caught it now.
We.
But if that's the case, you know, there's.
Not our job.
Well, what difference does it make who's.
I really don't.
They were trying to figure out.
The bottom line is they didn't do their homework and now they want us to bail them out.
That's not at all what I'm hearing. I think this would look stupid to have bricks halfway up.
What was changed before they were there and they, they didn't notice, they didn't see it.
So you think adding bricks to the back of a house, regardless of what it faces, adds value? That's the question, not who did what, when? Trying to slap somebody's hand for not getting something however many years ago when it's changed however many different times, but we don't need to get caught up in. Our job is to move forward with the best plan that adds value, that looks the best, that people can move into, be proud of, be happy with their neighborhood.
If that helps, I think I could probably safely say that our average price weight in there is about probably around 280,000. So they're, I mean, they're nicely finished homes on the inside, mostly hardwood floors throughout the main floor except for the bedrooms and people like carpet and nice, nice finishes, nice appliances. They're quality homes. I just think that, again, the rear elevation of a home, people would much rather have their money because you spend. And they're near the ends of the home itself.
To me, to me, this really comes down to, in light of recent discussion here, do we have a gotcha moment or are we going to do the right thing? And if we're going to hold somebody accountable for something like this, I think we all need to take a really good look at ourselves and what is happening around us because there's a lot of gotcha moments that could happen overnight.
So because this was just an opportunity to discuss this and really.
If I don't follow your.
Boy, I didn't hear a friend there, Dan. I know you're an expert in many circles, but this isn't one of them because that is absolutely ridiculous, the argument you're making.
So since we were only on track here to just discuss this tonight, Gary and I were just talking and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they just wanted to be placed back on the P&amp;Z agenda, that would be their right to request to be placed back on the agenda regardless of the discussion we had here tonight. If you wanted to make that request, they could. And if they don't want to make the request based on what they've heard tonight.
Then otherwise, it would be at their request being moved ahead for you to make an actual decision on at the next available council meeting.
Right. And with that being said, what, what the P&amp;Z decides to do, if they decide to take action on it and move this forward to us, then we would have the opportunity to address it at that point, depending on what they decide to do then?
Correct.
Does that make sense?
We'd gladly accept the opportunity to go back to P&amp;Z and we, we're not trying to.
Yep, I get it.
Except anybody was honestly just that we had to, we both throw down the wrong data.
I get it and that's why I'm asking, you know, I mean, that, that would be your opportunity if you want to do that. Since there's no action we're going to take here tonight, if you want to do that, then meeting is next Monday at 6:00.
And my garage has no stone facing a public street, 831 Edgewater Drive. Thank you.
So we'll leave that with you guys if that's what you want to do for next Monday.
Do we need to firmly ask now during a meeting?
You can make that call in the morning if you'd like to do that.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. I'm seven, mayor's report. If you have a couple of things, first off, I would just like to take a moment to recognize the passing of Mayor Skip Conkling out of Altoona who did pass away over the weekend after a battle of cancer and anybody who knew Skip or met Skip. He's a good guy to work, work with and talk to and I know you worked closely with him on MPOs. And various other organizations we're all a part of, so. Couple other things regarding fireworks, following our, what we did here three weeks ago when I addressed them, I followed back up with the residents who I had spoke to and both of them were appreciative of the action that we took and will be reaching out to their state elected officials to discuss their feelings with them again, I'm, I'm certain. But along those lines, in case you weren't paying attention to see, I think that Polk City was really one of the only communities in the metro whose council totally came together on this issue and didn't have split votes down the metro. A lot of councils who, it seemed to really create a lot of tension and, and I'm glad we went the way that we did. Trace, I did want to recognize you and your department regarding the Ernst-Sturston ride that took place here a couple of weeks ago and your phone called me Saturday morning. Glad we were able to talk each other off, off the fence that morning. But for those who don't know, and Mike, I appreciate your staff's time in getting the square ready, even though at the last minute they decided to change the route and, and we had some protesters who did come to town and Trace, you and your department did a good job working with them and getting them organized through town and in and out of town and as good as they could. So good job out of you guys for doing that. I did want to real quickly, and Gary, I don't know if this was on your list because we didn't get a chance to talk earlier about it, but some of this is timely from the complete streets discussion that we had earlier. About probably three, four weeks ago, things were quite congested up around the bridge corridor area. Okay, then if you want to piggyback on anything I'm saying here, we'll do that. I gave Mr. Mahan a call Friday evening and asked him, we needed to kind of jump on things. Something has changed up in that bridge corridor area as a whole. And I've talked to residents and as you know, because you were just probably through there earlier, there just seems to be something that has, had to increase that even down through Sailorville Drive, which isn't obviously ours, but Gary jumped on it, worked with Snyder. We're, we're studying up there and Gary, if I'm saying anything, piggyback on this and jump on it. We're doing a.
You cut my remarks in half.
Good, all right, good. I'm glad I can help out with that. But we are doing a traffic count study right now, working with Snyder. Gary pulled the trigger on that to make that happen, to see what we can do. And I think the bottom line is, is that we may need to make some decisions up there sooner than later as far as what ultimately will come from that corridor. But right now it is a disaster and at 5:00 in the evening, it's, it's a mess and it's only just seems to be getting worse. So good timing. What did I miss on that? Anything that you want to add to?
We hope to have a report done by June 23rd and get an audience as quickly thereafter with the DOT and hopefully we'll meet warrants. And Justin Jackson is guiding us with that one. He's got a couple of summer interns and he's turned them loose up here and the study's going to cost us around $800 worth of every penny. Look forward to it.
I think someone would be to go between, between us and the DOT is worth it. That's me.
So anyway, there's just a lot of things in, in play there and hopefully we'll be able to have a, a plan moving forward before long. I would like to send a quick reminder that sounds on the square is this Friday. If you didn't get a chance to go to the last one, Ron, you were definitely, we could talk for a while. Very good event, appreciate the chamber and all they do. And lastly, because I'm in a thanking mood, I would like to thank the fire department for making a appearance at my house at about 9:30 last Thursday night when a certain little child of mine decided that she wanted to jump on the bed. And we'll just leave it at that and like to thank the fire department for their timely response to my address once again.
I memorized.
I'm sure you do. With four kids, it's bound to happen. So anyway, with that, I'm done. Mr. Lane, I'll move on to you.
I just have one thing that kind of refers back to our consent agenda, the donation of the bicycles. I just wanted to mention that the Des Moines Bicycle Collective is one of the people that come to the pedestrian and bicycle roundtable every month. They're a very good organization and they will make very good use of everything that we donate to them. And I thank you for making that, reaching out and making that connection.
We need a little research and to try to find something instead of just scrapping the bikes. And actually, Officer Untrauer deserves a majority of the credit for moving forward and getting things lined up. He's our evidence technician, deals found property or anything like that. So he gets to line and share the credit for that. Yeah, we wanted them to go to someplace productive. They, they hire people that might not be able to get a job otherwise or work on the bicycles and provide an outlet for that and then it's a pretty, pretty neat organization.
So I had. Perfect. Mr. Anderson?
Nothing.
Mr. DeVorec had a work conflict. Mr. Mordini? Nothing, Your Honor? Mr. Surgeon?
Just real quickly echo kind of what you had mentioned about Skip Conkling. I didn't know him well, but has been on MAC the entire time I've been on there. Goes way, way back past that, farther than I realized in briefly reading his obituary. But whether, regardless of what you thought, you knew where he stood and I happily respect that. So just wanted to note that, that's all.
That's a true statement. And I thought interesting that in his obit, he'd been to DC 20.
Yeah. Was it just ready to tell a congressman or a senator where they were wrong? Good for him.
That's true. Yeah. Further council discussion, city minister's report.
I've got several things and I had to resort to some notes here, so bear with me. Marina Cove pond, I want to give an update. We started working with Tyler Stubbs, IDNR. He's part of the Urban Fisheries Initiative. He's reached out to us and we've embraced that. Mike has been working with him and he is interested in urban ponds and urban fishery or urban fishing. And as such, is going to be working with Public Works on our two ponds. And one of the first things he's going to do is a sampling of Marina Cove pond to find out what kind of fish we have in there. Further, as related to Marina Cove pond, again, this year we're treating for algae as we did last year, using the same chemicals. Hopefully the fish that Tyler Stubbs finds are not neon in color or any of that item. Bridge Road, I think the mayor said this very well, we don't know why we're getting the additional traffic. Some things that have come to mind are the construction on 141, Councilman Sarchet's favorite road. There's instances and lane closures on I-35. But why it would, the traffic that has increased here, we just simply don't know. We've been looking at this for some time, sometime being the last two weeks, really looking at this hard and we're seeing traffic back up frequently on Bridge Road and also frequently on the other side of the bridge. In fact, it was reported to us last week that they got off the interchange, at the interchange of 141 and 415 and it came to a stop.
I was there. I heard about it.
Ian was there too, huh?
Yes, tonight.
Was there? I heard last Tuesday was real bad for whatever they're eating.
So we're going to try to, IDOT's got to know about this. We're trying to handle our problems here, but I think the problems that we're having here are part of a bigger situation and issue and we don't know what it is. But I'm trying to take as fast of a track as we can. If we've got this type of an issue here, we may be making warrants for signals. We'll be letting you know. We're going to continue on with this and hopefully get to a successful end. Also in front of you is a postcard type stock that's going to be mailed out tomorrow. I just wanted to go through this with you very quickly. This deals with water turbidity. Basically, what I'm going to tell you is turbidity is the cloudiness of the water. And I'm not so sure that all the hoops that we're jumping through isn't some type of political event. But all, all that aside, Des Moines Water Plant. political event, but all that aside, Des Moines Water Plant had a meter that, as they went back and tried to recreate this event, could only have malfunctioned. It malfunctioned for six minutes, and during that period of time, it gave a turbidity level that surpasses the IDNR rules and regulations on their Level 2 standards. Mind you, that six minutes of water that was produced dumps into a million gallon storage facility, and that storage facility is then pushed out into millions more gallons of water in our water system, and then by the time it gets to Polk City, is mixed on a 50-50 deal. Don't factor that in at all, because it doesn't work. This level of turbidity never, never hit Polk City. However, DNR rules and regulations state that this information must go out. You're getting a copy of this, so you see it beforehand, ask any questions you want, but we're required to notify each and every one of our customers and residents that there for six minutes, there was a turbidity level on May 18th. It's long gone. Chances are if it happened again, our obvious snowballs, chance in hell, and we're going through, yes, I said that, we're going through with this, and these will be mailed out, like I said, tomorrow. We got a 30-day window of June 18th for the last ones to be mailed. They're all being mailed tomorrow. Jenny has found one of the cheapest alternatives in doing this, just going out ball-cray, and because it doesn't have an address, everybody's gonna get one in their mailbox, and it satisfies the DNR.
I get the general impression you're pleased about this.
Not a bit.
Okay.
Not a bit.
Yeah, I know.
Not a bit.
Mike, I know you had received the email and such. Is there anything you care to add to this? I mean, I know when we first got it, it's like, okay, and then it just blew up into, no, you have to notify every single resident and blah, blah, and not only do we, I used to make, and everybody else does too.
And K. Jackson in Des Moines.
Because of six minutes and a DNR requirement, and every single resident in all of those communities have to be notified, ever. Unreal.
There's nothing really more, Gary's explained it.
And I think we tried every avenue we could to get out of this, and there was nothing we could do.
That is correct.
But inevitably, it will lead to phone calls.
Yeah, we have to put our number on here and not the one of our works.
Which one?
On the other side, I know.
Probably just need to put Iowa DNR number on there. That helps me a lot.
Or you have more information than...
I know. My point. Well done.
Yep. Good luck, Danny.
Yeah. Deal with the phone calls.
Two other items real quick. Conduit financing, council suggested that we go ahead with conduit financing with Wesley Life Project. We have, staff has negotiated, and we're coming back with $8,000 instead of stuff. Well, that's a great... In the scheme of things, not a big one. Well, I think we're gonna end up coming up with a policy for this in the future that we can base it on things, but I figured if we got $8,000, we were doing pretty good on this, because that's 11.4 basis points, so not bad.
On a staff time-to-revenue basis, that's a heck of a good deal for us, is it not?
Yes, it is. Very much so. You saw that the public hearing for that is set for July 10th. Last comment that I wanna make is DART. DART has approved their new governance structure. They will be coming to city councils to get the new 28E agreement passed. Proceedings have been prepared by staff that allows the council to go into the 28E, but also brings attention to the fact that going into that 28E agreement does not in any way, shape or form reset the clock on the notice to withdraw. And whenever that gets here, I'm sure that DART is going to target the larger communities first. I would not expect ours to be until sometime in July, but know that staff has taken a very hard stance in making sure that if we do pass the 28E, and from everything I can tell, we should probably pass the 28E, but hold firm with our withdrawal resolution, and you will see that in the documents that will accompany that 28E when it ever does make the agenda. Mayor, that's all I have at this time.
And before we go farther with that, does anybody wanna volunteer to be the appointed commissioner and/or alternate commissioner to DART? Has to be an elected official. Why don't they make sort of DART board and see which one of your names land on, so...
Formally nominate Mayor Jason Lawrence.
I think you can do that. I think it's my appointment, I think, is how I read this.
It is.
Favor work, I think, just checking. Wanted to make sure anybody was interested, so. Attorney's report.
Nothing here.
Engineers report, not here, Public Works.
Just that Gary hit on it, the TK Construction is going to start working on Third Street and Northside Drive. It's actually on Third Street, so you'll be seeing lane shifts again down there. It worked out last time after some tweaking, but I think they've got that picture now. And Calgary Concrete has finished the 2017 Street program, which is your Priner Drive, Cedar Drive, Lincoln Street, in the middle block, and Second, Van Dorn. They are done this week.
And you, yeah, I'd agree with them.
Perfect. I was just, last time it was just a matter of timing. They waited till, maybe that's what contributed to the problems on Bridge Road, because they put up their barricades right at busy time, and then left them up all weekend. That was a problem I had with it, so I think it was just a question of timing, and I don't think there's anything wrong with the work.
Right. IT?
Nothing.
Nothing? Your first time.
And he came back for a second.
And he did come back for a second, like, I know. Finance? Fire Department?
Nothing other than a few people have asked if the world was coming to an end this weekend, but definitely was not, however, summer season is upon us.
Yep.
Had an extremely busy weekend, to be honest.
Welcome to summer.
Hopefully, it's not an even bigger than how the summer's gonna go.
I'll do my best to not call again for a while.
Yeah, I can count it.
Oh, okay, all right. Five girls screaming at you to call in. Just get to bed. Yeah, right. Library?
It's summer at the library, too.
That's the police department. That's all right. He's okay.
So it's summer there, so we have, as of this morning, we've sent up about two of our summer reading program in the last week, and the first story time is tomorrow. We already know for sure that we've got 30 kids coming from the daycare, and that doesn't count the community drop-ins.
Oh.
We looked back at last year and found out there were 76 kids, there were 76 there last year, so don't stop by tomorrow, because we're gonna exceed the fire capacity in there.
At least it's not gonna be hot, the kids will just be outside playing, and you don't have to worry about going to a cool place tomorrow, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Good. Glad everything's going well. I'll go back to you.
I know in the past, it's been a point of contention with the MetroStar agreement, what we get for what we pay for. That came to the front of my mind, because the bill just came for our participation in that. Participation, I think it's about $4,000. What I've done since I started working here is, I know a lot of the people down there from being on that team at my previous job, they are more than willing to be a benefit to us. They helped me out tremendously on, we thought we were gonna have a lot of protesters in the square. They were standing up, extra officers come up here and assist for that with crowd control, turn to that. Sergeant Mulstat down there is very, very helpful. He helped me with some planning and gave me some ideas. Obviously, they're more experienced than that than I am. And then also, they're facilitating, so our police department is probably the last ones, and Iowa, or Xavier, Iowa, but in Central Iowa, they don't have a patrol rifle program where officers are equipped with a patrol rifle. All modern law enforcement officers should have one, and most do. That requires a lot of training, and it takes a specialized instructor to do it. They are providing instructors, the time and ranges for our officers to go, as our schedule allows, to meet with them and get their initial training done, and then they also offer our officers into their, every other month, training rotation on their patrol rifle teams to stay up to date on those skills. So just a little feedback, so we are starting to see return on investment for that, and they're more than welcome to continue to work with us to see where else they can be a benefit for us, and not just that end-of-the-world call-out, you know, hostage situation, a bomb threat, things like that, where they can help us with more of our day-to-day operations, so we can benefit from that agreement.
I think that's awesome, and if you could also pass along too, if that was brought up. I don't know if anybody here at all that is at all against or not in favor of the MetroStar program at all. It's a great program, great group of guys. I think the issue at hand is more that larger communities are often asking us and others for money to subsidize their budget when we're just trying to make ours work. So I'm glad to hear that they're doing that. That's awesome.
No, and I don't think that ever was the issue, it was just what are we getting for a money-type deal, other than just a once-in-a-lifetime event where they would come and respond. And I think in the past, it was just lack of relationship with the unit down there. But you're absolutely right. Every call I make down there is, what can we do to help, chief? What do you need, chief? We'll help any way we can. So it's just been a very, I knew it was that way when I was on the team, but now that I changed positions, changed departments, I didn't, you know, it's a different, I'm coming in there with a different role, and it's still the same reception, so.
Same thing. Dan, you said you had one more thing?
Well, I just kinda forgot some more of a heads-up. There'll be a representative from the American Legion requesting to be on a future agenda to discuss cemeteries in the neighborhood, not necessarily in Polk City proper, and specifically the one out by the shooting range. He says there are a lot of Polk City vets that are in there with dis-repaired tombstones, including a couple from the Civil War, that tombstones are almost completely pushed over and everything. He was just wondering if that was something the city might wanna participate with them in and trying to spruce up. And I said, well, if they're out of city limits, I don't know what we can or what the council would be wanting to do, but I just wanted to give everybody that heads-up.
Thank you. Citizens group, nobody take a motion on...
Motion to adjourn.
Tag him. All in favor?